Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting of May 6th. Tonight's virtual meeting is being broadcast live on cell phone channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to the work of Mark Sauer and IT Director Brian LaRoe. It will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on May 13th. Due to the fact this is a virtual meeting, public participation is suspended. However, if the public has a question or comment, they can also email the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. First on the agenda is public, excuse me, Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening? Not saying anything, I would just like to point out, we've had a few events. Last Friday was National School Principals' Day. Yesterday was National Teachers' Day, and today is National Nursing Day. And it's poignant, I think, that these three days are falling within this pandemic that we're dealing with. I can't be more proud to work with our principals, all of our teachers, and the nursing staff. Noel Freeman, Director of Nursing, is with us today again to speak about what the nurses are doing for the district. But a big thank you to all of the members of the community in those groups. We can't do this without you, and this is such a proud moment for us as we work through something that we've never done before. So, thank you very much. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I want to mention a couple of things. First off, we had a really terrific event over this past weekend. And it was the first ever Virtual 5K and beyond running, any kind of exercise that people who participated wanted to do sometime over the weekend. They signed up. We actually had over 1,500 participants. Many of them, and I'll share a slide a little bit later in our report, submitted photos of what they had done for exercise. The weather, of course, cooperated. It was a beautiful weekend. But it was a terrific way to get people engaged in some physical activity during this pandemic. I want to thank Lisa Artika, who is a school nurse at Oak Middle School. It was her brainchild, and she led the effort. Her colleague, school nurse at Oak, Maureen Pelizari, phys ed teachers at Oak, Karen Keenan and Jeff LaRose, Director of Phys Ed Health and Family Consumer Science, Jeff Lane, Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing, Anne Jones, the Principal at Oak, and Jane Lazard, our Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships, all played a role in getting the word out and promoting and supporting this terrific event. I also want to thank Sneakerama Business right across the bridge. And they are supplied anyone who participated with a coupon and a certificate of completion. So, that was great support from a local sponsor. But again, thanks to everybody who participated. It was a great event, and we really appreciate the people who put that together. I'd also like to let the community know that we had some very successful results with the State Science and Engineering Fair. It was held virtually because of the situation. But I want to let people know that we had a senior at Shrewsbury High School receive an honorable mention at the state level, Zoe Rudnick, for her project titled "Small Robot Swarm Navigation on Lunar and Planetary Surfaces." We had a 10th grader who earned a third place at the state level, Alina Skurakina. Her project was titled "Creating a More Efficient Membrane for Microbial Fuel Cells." And we had a first-place state winner, Arnav Mishra, who's also a sophomore. His project was called "Helping the Deaf and Blind One Step at a Time." So, I congratulate those three students. In addition, we had a ninth-grade student, Aditi Dosie, who actually had a project selected to be recognized nationally by the International Science and Engineering Fair. And according to their website, about 1,800 out of literally tens of millions of projects around the world each year are selected at that level. Aditi's project is titled "Exploring the Effects of E-Sigarettes Using Drosophila Melanogaster", which I'm not pronouncing correctly probably, but that's a common fly. Interested in learning more about these projects, and if we are able, we'll present something at a later school committee meeting this spring. But congratulations to Zoe, Alina, Arnav, and Aditi on those outstanding results in our Science and Engineering Fair process. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. First scheduled appointment is a really good news story tonight. We have an anonymous donor who would like to donate $50,000 to the Shrewsbury Public Schools to support the purchase of unbudgeted and new COVID-19-related expenses. The committee received a report from Dr. Lazard, and she's unable to be with us this evening, and Dr. Sawyer will speak about this donation.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. This is a wonderful, good news story indeed. And as you know, the school committee has a policy around gifts and donations. And anything above the level of $5,000 must be voted to be accepted by the school committee. This is 10 times that amount because it's an extremely generous gift. This is from a Shrewsbury family in the district who has a child in the school district who wishes to remain anonymous, but they did signal to us that they wanted to support us, knowing that we were taking on some unexpected expenses during the pandemic. Dr. Lazard had actually interacted with this family back in the fall, and that's part of her role in her new role as Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being. And we're very fortunate that the family reached out during this difficult time to offer to support the school district with some unexpected expenses. The memorandum that the school committee has indicates that we'll utilize the $50,000 in the following ways: $10,000 towards expenses where we purchased iPads with cellular connection for families who did not have internet connections, so that those students could be connected to our remote learning program; $12,500 for a one-year educational software subscription to the Seesaw platform, which is the platform that really is of choice of our elementary educators, that we had a lot of folks using that already before the pandemic, and many more have adopted it since. And so, we bought the license, so we'd be able to support that on a district level and provide a better experience for all the users. And then, $27,500 towards the purchase of the Zoom software license, which we also purchased, of course, to enable video conferencing as part of the remote learning program. This is knowing that the budget challenges that we're facing for next year, and being able to expense these to this philanthropic gift is really unexpected and extremely, we're extremely grateful for it. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee has. And there are, I also want to mention, it's in the memo, but people know there's certainly no contingencies or quid pro quos. This all meets with all of the aspects of the school committee policy for gifts for use in our educational program. And I certainly strongly recommend the school committee vote to accept this very generous donation.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions or comments? There being none. I think this is a wonderful generous offer, especially at this time. We know that the financial picture is not improving as we sit here. So, this is a very large thank you from our community and from the committee. They have a motion to accept a donation of $50,000 from an anonymous donor to be used for the purchase of educational technology resources to mitigate learning loss during school closure.
So moved.
Second.
Second roll call. Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we will hear an update from Dr. Sawyer and District commissters on the district's response to the COVID-19 crisis.
Okay. Bear with me for one moment. I'm going to share my screen. All right, just confirm you can see that?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So, I want to start off again with an update to the community relative to some of the work that's happening. Things are moving more into a steady state now that there's fewer new things coming at us, but there still is lots of work happening, certainly, both as part of our remote learning program as well as operationally. And Mr. Collins, and I will make a report later in the meeting around the operational and finance elements. But in this, in this report, I'll make reference to a few things going on community and well-being wise that Dr. Lazard was going to present, but she could not be with us this evening due to the death in the family. Noel Freeman will be presenting some information about mental health. And Ms. Clouder will be providing some information about professional development, both for parents and staff, and some other elements relative to the educational program. So, with that, let me begin again by emphasizing our three key messages. We continue to focus on the health and well-being of our students and our families and our staff. That's our first priority always, knowing that everyone has a collective responsibility, just like we know and we hear from Governor Baker and other officials. It's our collective responsibility in society to try to stop the spread of COVID-19. The latest order, of course, being more, being required to wear masks in public when you can socially distance. We have a collective responsibility for what we're doing for our students and maintaining our school program during the course of this pandemic. And third, we continue to support our families and students and staff from a distance when we can do empower learning and support students in any way we possibly can. I mentioned this in my Superintendent's Report earlier. This was a wonderful event over the weekend, the rise up of Together Virtual 5K. Over 1,500 participants. There's a link to this pad that people received, that people could upload photos of exercising as a family. And there's some really terrific ways in which people were getting out and enjoying the sunshine over the weekend and exercising. And it was just a smashing success. And again, I want to thank everyone who put it together and participated. And I suspect, given the success of it, I'm sure we'll do something like this again sometime in the future. We have a new challenge. The Physical Education Teachers at Shrewsbury High School, to honor the senior class of 2020, has put a challenge out there for the month of May, which is also Physical Fitness Month across the nation, to challenge the community that includes our students, staff, families, community members, anyone connected to the Shrewsbury community alumni, to log their exercise and activity minutes over the course of this month towards a goal of 2,020,000 minutes to represent the class of 2020. As you can see, and this is a screenshot from earlier. I'm sure there's more minutes logged already, but we're over 56,000 minutes. Our students at Shrewsbury High School, as part of their remote physical education program, will be doing this over the course of May. And we certainly encourage folks in the community to do that. And there's a link that was sent out to everyone by email. It can also be found on our website under the Physical Education website, and we'll find a prominent place on the homepage as well the next day or so. We'll get that link. But again, that's something for the month of May to promote physical activity, and I really thank the Physical Education faculty at Shrewsbury High School for putting this together for our community. With that, not only is physical well-being important during this time, but so is mental well-being. I'd like to turn it over to Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing. We'll talk a bit about mental health awareness and supports and other elements related to health.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. I'd like to start tonight by wishing a happy School Nurses' Day to my team and to thank them for their efforts working with students and staff, as well as with the Regional Public Health Alliance. To date, we have handled cases, case investigations for over 250 COVID-19 cases under the direction of the amazing Patricia Bruckman, the Chief Public Health Nurse in Worcester. I'd also like to thank you all for your time this evening, and would like to provide information on two topics. First, I'll talk a little bit about mental health awareness and some available resources, and then provide a quick update on the governor's order to wear face coverings that Dr. Sawyer just mentioned. First, I want to acknowledge once again that the extraordinary situation that we are in is difficult for everyone. I saw this shout-out to kids recently on a Twitter post, and it struck me as truth. A lot of attention has been paid to how hard this is for adults who are managing working from home, helping their children learn from home, et cetera. But less attention and praise has gone to the children, whose entire worlds have been disrupted as well. Perhaps this is because a lot of times, kids tend to adjust to change a lot easier than we adults do. In any case, I just want to take a moment to thank all of our students out there who are carrying on and being heroes throughout this time. Next, I also want to acknowledge that there are lots of people, kids and adults alike, who are finding this time of great change and social isolation to be a challenge to their mental health. In a Kaiser Family Foundation study that was done at the beginning of March, which feels like so long ago now, 45% of adults said that this pandemic has affected their mental health. 19% said that it had made a major impact. Some people may have experienced mental health issues in the past, and this time has exacerbated those issues. Others may be realizing these struggles for the first time. In any case, if you are feeling this way, you are not alone. As we move into May, which is National Mental Health Awareness Month, it seems like a good time to remind people that school and community resources are available and that there is no shame or stigma in reaching out for help. During typical school operations, Shrewsbury School nurses, school adjustment counselors, and school psychologists support students and families around mental health concerns every day. Concerns such as anxiety, panic attacks, depression, and other more complex needs are triaged and supported throughout the school day through conversations and reinforcement of coping skills. It goes without saying that these interactions have been altered by our current circumstances. However, we want people to know that support is still available from school. If you or your child is struggling at home, please don't hesitate to reach out by email or phone to your school nurse or counselor. Similar to our teaching colleagues, these professionals are holding weekly office hours during which they are available for unscheduled check-ins, and appointments can be arranged by email for alternate times as needed throughout the week. The Massachusetts Network of Care website was launched by the state in March. This site is a searchable directory of services and organizations dedicated to helping preserve and protect your mental health. The website connects people with information on services in their communities in multiple languages and all searchable by keywords and zip codes. The site is user-friendly and includes categories such as youth or adult mental health counseling, substance use disorder counseling, housing and food resources, a symptom checker for physical and mental health symptoms, and more. There are a couple of additional state and national resources that I'd also like to highlight. 211 is a resource for many things, including crisis and emergency help for mental health concerns, suicide and domestic violence, as well as resources for essential needs such as food, housing, and healthcare. Trained operators are available to talk and/or to direct callers to more specialized help. 211 can be accessed by phone by dialing 211 or online at mass211.org. The Crisis Text Line, or in Massachusetts, the Call to Talk Line, is a warm line versus a hotline. This term was new to me when I recently heard it, and it refers to a place for people to reach out for less urgent support when they just need someone to talk to. Call to Talk is a mental health, emotional support, and suicide prevention program run by Mass 211. It operates 24/7 and provides confidential, compassionate listening to assist people during stressful times. Call to Talk partners with the Crisis Text Line to respond to people by text if that is preferred to a phone conversation. You can access the text service by texting C2T or HOME to 741741, or access the phone option by calling 508-532-2255. And finally, it's essential when discussing mental health to include information specific to suicide prevention. As previously stated, the extraordinary situation we are currently experiencing is difficult for all of us. It is more challenging for many of us and may feel impossible to some of us, leading to thoughts of suicide. The statistics on this slide are sobering. For example, the fact that suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people aged 10 to 34, and that suicide rates are steadily increasing over the last two decades. Our own regional youth health survey data tells us that between 10 and 15% of our middle and high school students have seriously considered suicide, and that our students who identify as LGBTQ are at even greater risk. So, our school community is clearly not immune to suicide. The graphic also reminds us that it's okay and often helpful to talk about suicide and offers encouraging information about treatment and recovery from feelings of hopelessness and suicidal thoughts. If you or someone you love is feeling hopeless and contemplating suicide, please do not hesitate to reach out to that person to check in and/or to ask for help from others for them or for yourself. The Suicide Prevention Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress and prevention and crisis resources for you and your loved ones. There are also additional resources on their website, suicidepreventionlifeline.org. Suicide is not the answer. Please do not be afraid to ask for help. With all of these resources, we also remind you that if you are in a situation that requires immediate medical help, please dial 911. And now, moving on to face masks. Most people are probably aware that the governor issued an order last week that went into effect today regarding the use of face masks or cloth face coverings. Briefly, the order states that anyone over the age of two must wear a face covering in all public places where maintaining proper physical distancing of six feet is not possible. This includes both indoor and outdoor public spaces, and in essential business places like grocery stores, pharmacies, et cetera. It includes both customers and employees. The order also reminds people not to use medical-grade masks as they should be safe for medical professionals. A face covering can include anything that covers your nose and mouth, including dust masks, scarves, and bandanas. The cloth should fit snugly but comfortably, include multiple layers of fabric, and be easily laundered after use. More details about masks can be found at the mass.gov website that's on the screen. Again, thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Freeman. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clouder to talk a bit about the role of remote learning and some training and some various things that we're working on over the past week. Ms. Clouder, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry. You would think with all the practice I'd get better, but I'm modeling vulnerability. We know that gratitude's good for the giver and the receiver, and so I'm going to start that way too. As you mentioned, Mrs. Fritz, this week, we had official reason to celebrate, in turn, the staff that work in the Food Services Department, our principals, teachers, and today, nurses, who have been doing amazing things in this time of crisis and not just in Shrewsbury. I put this slide up because the animation was created by Google in honor of Educator Appreciation Week. And when I say educator, I include our nurses in that. If you log onto it live, you'll see that the comments bubble from one letter, and then the teacher waves a wand and magic happens, and the comment goes away, and another comment pops up. And I know that every educator watching, which is that it was as easy as waving a wand. And certainly, there are days when classrooms feel like magical places. You can see the child on the right experiencing one of those days. But most of the time, teaching is really hard work, and especially now, and student comments usually come in bunches. So, I want to express gratitude because in the sixth week, our halfway point, like the animation, our educators are still standing. And more importantly, they're still pushing themselves and each other to make the most of the time we have remaining. I'm grateful especially because in the past week, I've learned just how many of our educators are showing initiative and adjusting their practice in accordance with our guiding principles. We want our educators to feel empowered to make changes to better serve our students. And the common experience of this crisis means that we can all learn from each other. This week, our staff will have opportunities for PD with outside providers as well as the internal PD we've been providing with our teacher leaders. And although not everybody will participate right now, because for many reasons, professional development might not be a priority, I'm confident that eventually we'll find a way to reach everyone because like anything else with practice, we're getting better and better at solving problems. So, this is a screenshot of the PD that was in place for teachers today. Like the experiences we're creating for students, this learning is a hybrid model, which means that teachers could tune in live, or they could watch the recording of the webinar after, or they could do both, because the nice thing about a recording is you can watch it as many times as you like. At the elementary level, we're moving forward into Week Two on Seesaw Training, which is the platform chosen to push and receive student work at that level. That will continue, as will Schoology support, with two additional webinars scheduled. This is the first of the two from outside providers. In this screenshot, you can see Greg Klewic from EdTech Teacher pointing out nonverbal ways to engage students using Zoom features. We know that some of our students are reluctant to talk on Zoom meetings. And so, finding that there are some nuanced features of the Zoom platform that teachers can call on that kind of lower the risk level for students who are shy is important. He went on to talk about different ways to leverage video using familiar tools like PowerPoint and new ones like interactive whiteboards that you can use online to toggle back and forth with students. And one of the things that was just amazing to me is the comment stream happening. There were 39 participants live tuning in, representing all levels. And it just struck me that what was a real new tool and cause for stress in the first couple of weeks of the closure is now become the way that we connect with families and with each other. And teachers are finding the familiar routines from the classroom can be replicated online. And this week in particular, I was struck by Patton Principal Wendy Bell, who was telling me about how amazed she was looking at the Zoom etiquette that some of our youngest learners were showing in a class conversation, and how well teachers are using things like breakout rooms to kind of facilitate small group talk within the larger discussion. So, just as we're committed to helping staff climb out of the implementation dip, we're mindful of the journey that parents have been on as well. And thanks to the feedback that I received last week from you, I was inspired to put together some learning modules for families. I'll be sharing two slide decks created by our teams in a district communication tomorrow. There's a slide deck on Schoology and a slide deck on Seesaw. And I want to acknowledge the efforts of Sherwood Principal John Kelly, Ken Almeida, who's a Spanish teacher at the high school and soon to be the interim Foreign Language Director, and Arlena Boyle, Lynn Doherty, and Shawna Powers at the elementary and district level, as well as Information Technology Director Brian LaRue in getting all that done. As you could say, it took a village, but I'm really proud of what we've created. In looking more closely at what we had for parent resources, we discovered that we had some tutorials, but that we could do a better job of drawing attention to them if we consolidated where the information can be found. So, I want to acknowledge a very kind parent who emailed Sandy and I, and in turn, raised my awareness about how some simple shifts in the language we use can help parents to navigate better, and how our attempts to help in email are sometimes overwhelming. And so, one of the things I'm mindful of is making sure that as we share these resources, we continue to embed information about those resources and emphasize kind of a one-stop place where people can find technology support. So, the place on the Shrewsbury Public School site where you can find all of this is now called the Remote Learning Page. And we're going to try to make an effort to drive people to get some help in consistent ways so that we can learn more about what our other users are experiencing, and so we can respond. Going forward, we're going to work with principals to ensure that when they communicate to families, because often their communications are the first priority for families, that there are also embedded reminders about how families can access technology support. This slide is all about Seesaw statistics, which is really exciting to me. This tool first became available to elementary teachers on the 16th of April, and already, it's being widely used by teachers and families. When you look at the different numbers, it's important to note that while Seesaw is the platform that's most popular with our elementary teachers, we have not mandated that every teacher uses it, and we haven't done that purposefully. Now is not the time to disrupt established working platforms that were in place, and teachers were also using tools like Blooms or ClassDojo well before the closure. And we didn't want to pull the rug out from under families at a time when there was a lot of chaos happening. User feedback on both the school and home side will help guide our next steps with Seesaw. But I think it's really encouraging to notice not just kind of what's being pushed out in terms of new items, but also how families can use it. but also how families are going to the site to review student work. In times of change, it's tempting to think about implementation as linear. And certainly, the reality we've all been confronted with is that it's much more dynamic. William Deming was an American engineer, a statistician, a professor, a very accomplished person. He developed a continuous quality improvement model, which consists of a sequence of four stages: plan, do, study, and act, all in the name of continuous improvement. And I think it's interesting that in looking into it, Deming saw his model as the natural continuation of an earlier model introduced by a statistician named Walter Schuhart. And he practiced what he preached in the sense that he built on the model that was begun by somebody else. As we figure out what translates in this new remote learning environment, every educator in the nation is experiencing what feels like several different cycles. Joe, if you click again. There you go. We're a learning organization, and I find it really gratifying to see how willing staff are to respond not just to students but to one another. We have approximately six weeks left, and we will continue to improve up until the last day. I say this to acknowledge that our educators have not waited. They are improving practice in small-scale ways, as they should, to meet the needs of the students and families they serve. And these small changes over time eventually have a really big impact. We have lots of feedback from recent surveys that district leaders are busy analyzing, and we will be soliciting staff feedback as well. I'm sure that both things will inform our approach, and there'll be more to come in a detailed report next week. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clodder. And to wrap up, I just want to again acknowledge and appreciate Ms. Fritz's knowledge at the opening of the meeting. Last week, we were able to honor on School Lunch Hero Day our cafeteria workers who do such incredible work all year round and those who are helping to support the meal program for the families right now who require meal support. Last Friday was National Principals Day, and we certainly have an outstanding team of leaders that we were happy to honor this past Friday. This week is Educator Appreciation Week. Yesterday was National Teacher Day, and today is National School Nurse Day. And I cannot thank our staff enough for the extraordinary work they've been doing throughout the year, but particularly during these very difficult and trying times. I believe that we are extremely fortunate in Shrewsbury to have outstanding educators who are working with the best interests of our students in mind. It's been something that we've taken a lot of pride in over several decades in terms of having really strong personnel processes and being very choosy about who we hire and who we retain. And that makes an unbelievably positive difference ultimately in the effectiveness of a public school district. Very soon, it's been on hold for a bit, but very soon we'll be releasing an annual report to the community. And you'll see through that not only statistics, but profiles of various alumni, students, as well as staff that really speak to the high quality of our school district. And that's something that during this time I don't want to lose sight of. And it's the people who make up the district and serve our students who make the biggest difference. So from I want to thank them again for all of their efforts, especially during this very challenging time. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee has regarding the report that Ms. Freeman and Ms. Clodder were able to give this evening.
Thank you for those reports. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Lindsay?
Thank you so very, very much. There's so much I want to say as a parent with kids in the district about how we've been evolving and adapting and changing. But I think it really bears repeating how appreciative I am that Ms. Freeman shared a real intentionality around the mental health of our young people, what our kids are going through at times and how they're having to manage their social beings, and this is awfully hard time for them. So I have always had a concern for some of the numbers in our district about kids we should be concerned about, and now they're home and we don't have eyes on them in the same way. And so I really appreciate you lifting that up. And I hope people take advantage of the resources that are out there. On a positive side, I want to share some really lovely things that have been happening, even as we juggle, and I've shared with this group before, and everyone listening, how hard it is to be a parent and a working-home parent. But some really lovely things that have been adapting and changing. My first grader had an opportunity with her class, socialization in first grade go hand in hand, right? Half of learning is being with other young people, and her teacher set up, I think she called it Fun for Firsties, small groups, up to five kids, mostly just to get together and play games. And so she's doing additional Zooms, and I appreciate that she has the capacity to do that. I know not all of our educators do and have different things that they're juggling, but my daughter loved it, and I don't know what games they played. She was gone for half an hour, and I was very happy too. But she was joyful that she got to see some of her friends and could chat about them and what they were up to. In addition, this afternoon, I shared a photo with Principal Bell, and it may even hit her Twitter feed, I think, at some point, of my daughter raising her hand in front of her laptop and being in her first breakout group and how that was managed. Ms. Papagen, one of our curriculum coordinators, was part of that and so was managing. She was doing two-digit regrouping of math and tens and ones. They had every kid with their little manipulatives and were figuring out how to make that work. So such exciting things to see change compared to where we were and where we're going to. So you know, even more levels of engagement, and I'm very appreciative of everybody who figures out how to make that all happen. I'm seeing more of it partnership work at the middle school level where kids are off on their own, working together as teams to complete projects, which is really exciting. And I, of course, really appreciate the updates about supporting parents with some of the technology. I really thank you and know that our parent community is trying to figure out how to manage the new tools. So I'm excited to see some of that. I couldn't though not comment on our tech team. I personally have reached out to the Parent Tech Line a couple of times with some confusion, and they have been incredibly responsive. I actually wanted to sort of suggest that maybe we could put that email address really front and center on that page you're putting together for parents, because I did have to dig through some things I couldn't I knew about it because I heard us talk about it here, but then couldn't quite remember. So for those who are listening, I have no idea how that IT team is being as responsive as they are, given the incredibly growing number of people they're supporting. But I had a very quick, both times, very quick email response, you know, a Zoom issue, an iPad issue, and really want to just call out both Ms. Leroux and his whole team, who've just been really, really impressive. So thank you to everybody who's moving mountains behind the scenes to make all this happen.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? And it looks like the screen is freezing, so if you have a question, just speak up or comment. Not seeing any, and I don't know if we're just frozen. Okay, I'm gonna move on. I just want to also thank Amy for the parent guide that is for Schoology and CSOW. I think these are really important things for the parents to have. And also, Noel, I'd like to thank you for mentioning students. I think the fact that we're thanking everyone, but students are really dealing with something that nobody has before and thinking about the mental you know, effect and the stress that they're having, it does need to be mentioned, and I think we're providing a lot of things for families. So thank you very much for that. Okay, if there's nothing further, next on the agenda is update on finance and operations from Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer, talking about the pandemic impact that is having on our finances.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'm gonna share my screen again here. Bear with me for one moment. I'm just gonna confirm again that you're able to see that.
Looks good.
Okay. So Mr. Collins and I will provide some information here relative to not a whole lot to update since last week, but I think it's important for the community to understand that lots of work is ongoing, although we're still in a remote mode, of course. And I'll ask Mr. Collins to start off with some information about our operations at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. First, I'd like to just mention again the continued meal support program that the district is providing, targeted toward students who are eligible for free reduced lunches and continuing meals during the school closure period. That program has been running three days per week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, distributing meals from eleven AM to twelve thirty PM in the afternoon from the high school site. Although we have a about a sixteen percent population, student population, who is eligible for free and reduced lunch. Interestingly, we've only been having about twenty to twenty-five cars actually drive through the high school and pick up meals on those three days a week. In addition to that, the cafeteria staff has been delivering meals to about eighteen families each week who don't have the transportation in order to drive up to the high school to access the drive-through program. So on a weekly basis, we're averaging between forty and forty-five families, which is a small percentage, but yet a very important, critical service for those families. In terms of other activities, because of, once we learned about the school closure being for the remainder of the school year, we had to work with the Public Buildings Department to have gained some access for our educators to obtain some additional educational materials that were in the classrooms that they hadn't retrieved before. So that schedule was set up and coordinated with Public Buildings. I want to thank them for their efforts to assist us with that. And because of the scheduling of teachers who were teaching during the daytime and then have nighttime commitments with family or spouses, we had to offer two different times. So in the intervening day, the public buildings went into each of the school buildings and re-sanitized all those spaces again. So again, we appreciate that activity. Also, this week, our kitchen staff went into each of the kitchen cafeteria areas to consolidate the remaining food supply that was on hand and delivered up to the high school where it can be utilized for the distribution program. And then cleaned up those spaces and shut things down, shut equipment down for the remainder of the school year. Next, on the next slide, we also, in terms of operations, continue the student registration process for the upcoming school year. And certainly thankful for the technology staff support in implementing online registration about at least twelve months ago, maybe even longer. And that has been a gradual evolution into online registration with the close support of the tech team and Pam Panarelli and Blake Stewart, who work in the registration process. So we are thankfully had that in place before COVID hit us, so we're able to do the majority of the work remotely and gain all the documents that we need electronically. But that is ongoing and certainly parents in the community who have students that they might want to transfer into the public system or new to town can certainly register their students now for the upcoming school year. On the financial front, of course, we continue to operate all of those important functions, like payroll for all of our staff. We are still producing nearly thousand paychecks on a bi-weekly pay period. We are paying all of our bills to our vendors and certainly continuing to draw down grant funds from the state and utilize those funds for the intended purposes, primarily to support either staff payroll or transportation costs. In terms of the last activity, of course, unfortunately, at your last meeting, it was decided to furlough three groups of staff, which impacted over a hundred staff members in the school department, those being those working in the Extended School Care Program, crossing guards and door monitors. And so all of that was set in motion last week after the Wednesday School Committee meeting. And now we're seeing the end result of that after having notified all those staff that we are getting information from the state that many of those folks have applied for unemployment assistance. And we are required to provide wage data for each of those claims. In addition, there are a number of those folks, about just under a dozen, who are benefit-eligible staff, and so we're coordinating with the Town Treasurer's Office, who manages the health insurance program and making sure that there's a continuation of benefits and coordinate with those staff members to make sure that they pay their share over the counter to maintain the integrity of their insurance programs, whether it be health insurance, life insurance, or dental plans. So that's what's happening on the operations front. And I guess I would just lastly say, and I know we're gonna talk more about this a little bit later, but our online payment system has continued to be open during this entire process, and certainly if families happen to owe us for some overdue fee or lunch account, have a negative lunch account, they can certainly still access our online payment portal. Again, that system's been in place for a number of years, thankfully, so all those payments can be done online remotely. And we would urge parents to remedy those negative accounts if they can. So that's what I have on the operations and in finance.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. In terms of some financial information, I wanted to let the committee and the community know that based on some initial information we received this week from the Mass Department in Secondary Education, the aid that our school district's likely to receive from the first, hopefully not last round of stimulus from federal funding directed towards schools will be, they're basing it on approximately eighty percent of what we receive for our Title I grants this current year. That will be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We will have to allocate a percentage of that to the various private schools that are within the borders of Shrewsbury. The recommendation that Mr. Collins and I have at this time is that that funding, which could be used for any expenses related to the pandemic starting in mid-March, but could be spent any time over the next fiscal year, even actually in September of two thousand twenty-one. And it's really fairly broad in that anything related to the pandemic can be expensed to this funding. Because we know we have unknown costs we're going to face next fiscal year, not knowing what the landscape will be like in terms of our reopening in the fall, our recommendation at this point is to hold the funding we'll have available as a school district in abeyance and keep that in reserve to address any unknown costs that we are facing in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The system will be handled like a federal entitlement grant, again, so a proportion share of that funding will need to be allocated to the private schools that are inside of Shrewsbury. I think it's important to note that I think there's fairly universal agreement among superintendents and school administrators that additional federal assistance that will end up coming to school districts through state and local governments. We're absolutely critical to maintain educational programming and staffing in the fiscal year ahead. Those who recall what the Great Recession was like for public school districts, there was a significant amount of stimulus, certainly more than one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that saved a lot of jobs during that couple of years that the economy had taken such a hit, and as a result, tax revenues and state aid for education and local ability to pay for education, other town services have been compromised. And it is my hope that that's something that will happen again with some further action by the federal government at some point. I want to mention some other financial challenges. We've been talking about this for the last couple of weeks. Mr. Collins and I continue to be in close contact with Kevin Mizikar, the town manager, regarding financial forecasting for next fiscal year. It does remain unclear at this time due to the lack of information on what state funding levels will look like. As I mentioned last week, Mr. Mizikar has done some projections around local revenue that we're taking into account as we do some initial planning. And the school leadership team that consists of our central office administration and school principals is working to discuss options for potential additional budget cuts next year. Those who have been watching Those who have been watching over the course of the year know that prior to the pandemic. We had already recommended a total of one point seven million dollars worth of budget reductions next year due to a. The difficult fiscal situation we were already in. Unfortunately, given the situation with the pandemic. It's almost assuredly necessary that we were going to be needing to reduce our budget even further. So that's work we're doing behind the scenes and based on updated information when we're able to receive it, based on potential. Additional funding that will help determine what level of reductions might be ultimately necessary. But in the weeks ahead, we will be reporting to the school committee in the community, what kinds of recommendations we might make depending on the amount of money that's available for next year. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Does committee have any questions or comments before we move on? Seeing none. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we will have a discussion. About fees and tuitions. The district is dependent on tuition and fees paid by families in order to operate various. Services, programs or activities that are optional in some manner. Some families have paid these intuition for services and programs that have taken place during a portion or all of the school closure period. Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer will now provide some information for consideration regarding potential credits or refunds for these FY twenty fees and tuitions.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Collins to share a slide presentation with some information about this topic. So he'll share his screen and he will take you through some of that information.
Okay, can everybody hear me and see the screen, the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So there are a variety of topics here I'd like to cover. First is some background context. In to say that this is the issue of issuing either refunds or credits to all of our customers for the variety of services is. Has some measure of complexity. I don't want to overcomplicate it, but I do want to make sure that the school committee. And that the community at large is aware of all the various aspects related to this topic before a decision is made. The other contextual piece is, is that unlike private businesses. That have a lot of latitude in terms of how they deal with these types of issues or provide refunds. We have many restrictions working in the public sector and associated laws that we have to follow and I'll elaborate on that a little bit more. And also want to acknowledge from a parent perspective and one who's paid these fees, kind of this common sense notion that. One should get what they pay for. So those are just some kind of beginning background contextual pieces that I wanted to. Bring about. Also, that part of the context and landscape as Dr. Sorry just previously mentioned. Is the severity of our current financial situation. And as we've spoken before, the reliance on fee revenue to pay for our costs in. Most of our fee revenue goes towards paying either staff salaries for the variety of programs or transportation. Also, that in this environment right now, that the district is continuing to pay most of its staff. With the exception of the extended school care program, crossing guards and door monitors. And continuing to pay our bus contractor a portion of the daily rate, seventy-five percent of the daily rate. That they would otherwise receive. So again, that's important context. Finally, in terms of context, is the size and scale of our fee paying customer base. I know that when people think about this, certainly as an individual family. One might think, it's not a big deal. It's just, you know, I wrote a check and thinking about it from their own personal perspective. But we have a fairly large school district in what we're talking about here in terms of scale. That weighs in the balance is over thirty, almost thirty-seven hundred different customers in potential refunds or credits. So no small amount. The also background is we've talked about our administrative cost structure here in the district. We know that we're thinly staffed to begin with. In that working in a remote environment naturally brings, I think I've experienced it myself, is reduced productivity. As a result of remote working, it just takes longer to get things done. Whether it's communication between coworkers or technology, it just takes longer to get things done. So we have reduced productivity in this environment. So that's some of the context. Considerations regarding fees for services. We certainly want to have the school committee. Understand that there are continued district cost liabilities despite the closure. That there have been policies in the past regarding refunds. This isn't, you know, new territory for us. We've dealt with questions before from parents on the topic pre-COVID. Again, we have municipal finance laws and regulations that we must be in compliance with. We certainly want to measure the administrative capacity and level of effort. And the cost that would be associated with providing refunds or credits. And then also, and certainly not least in this equation, is the parent expectations or customer expectations. So we do want to talk a little bit more. I want to talk a little bit more about specifically full-day kindergarten tuition. Preschool tuition, extended school care tuition, the after-school activities program, busing and food service. We do have continued cost liabilities despite the closure, as I mentioned before. Certainly in the preschool and full-day kindergarten program, while those are tuition-based programs. Staff, as the school committee voted, will continue to be paid their full salaries or wages. Throughout the entire school closure period, they're working remotely in providing remote services to those student populations. Again, as you voted at your last meeting. And the town manager subsequently approved is a amendment to our transportation contract. That provides for the seventy, seventy-five percent of the. Daily rate of the cost of each bus and that's in order to maintain the viability of. That company and our school transportation companies throughout the Commonwealth. So that they are there for us when we reopen. It's important revenue for them in order for them to pay for all their. Overhead costs for property management or leasing, ownership costs for bus equipment. Staffing costs and alike. So that's what is continuing to be ongoing paid by the district is seventy-five percent of our. Yellow bus home-to-school transportation costs. We do have again in place policies regarding refunds, but most of those have. Indicated that usually once a payment is made, for example, for busing. That there is this so-called no refund policy. Because we need to be able to have surety of revenue in terms of budget planning. And we can't really in our environment entertain a la carte services, if you will, for that type of service. We've certainly never faced a situation like what we're experiencing now in a pandemic. In having schools closed for upwards of a third of the year. So our policies don't anticipate the situation. So certainly does kind of require reconsideration. In terms of municipal finance laws, I think it's important for, again, the the community and the school committee to. Either know or be reminded that while we take over ninety percent of our payments through credit card transactions and our online payment provider. Unlike the private sector or other businesses. We are prohibited from providing credits back to people's credit cards. We just can't do that. Each payment or each dispersment that is made in our public sector environment. Has to be placed on what's called a payment warrant and that payment warrant has to be approved by the town accountant. To ensure that it is a valid expense or reimbursement. It has to be approved by the school committee and the board of selectmen. And if all those approvals are in place, then it's dispersed by the town treasurer. And of course, all of those things are in place. If, you know, folks are listening in the community and have an accounting background, really to. Make sure that there are appropriate separation of duties and internal controls to prevent fraud, waste or abuse. And make sure that there are monies available in order to have those checks be valid. So we can't just simply do a reversal on somebody's credit card. Also, it's important to know that if, while people might pay multiple fees to us, they might pay for busing and they might pay for kindergarten. It all does not go into one just big pot of money. We work in an environment that requires specific and dedicated so-called fund accounting. And when we charge a fee, it has to go into a separate account. And those revenues can only be used to pay for expenses related to the cost for that fee. So from our perspective, from our viewpoint. We have many different separate buckets of money in which we take payments and have to keep them separate. And then in order to make a payment or even a refund or reimbursement, have to then disperse it out of it. From a parent's view. One might think, well, you know, it's. It's all just kind of one big pot of money and, you know, I have a balance over in the food service account. So why don't you just. Apply that towards, you know, some other fee that I might owe, but it really doesn't work that way in our environment. And we can't net a refund against some other transaction and just kind of make it all work for our customer. I totally understand, you know, again, that this happens in other types of businesses, but it's just not really possible in our environment. In terms of the administrative level of effort. In tasks and costs, you know, if the school committee were to decide to provide refunds or credits. We can certainly hold back on providing a refund to somebody who owed us money in another account. And again, that requires some close management and double checking, but that is possible. We make all of our payments from a financial system called Munis. And in order to make a payment from that system, we would need to create a new customer file. Or vendor file in Munis. So. All of the payments that come into us go into first in our kind of the conduit is our student information management system, Power School. So that's where we're accounting for all of these fees in our student information management system. And we have a lot of information there, but in terms of making a dispersment. It needs to go through the towns and the schools' financial system, which is a completely separate system. We need to create customer files or vendor files there in order to make a payment. So that's a pretty labor-intensive task to do that. Certainly trying to look to leverage technology to. Facilitate that or expedite that if that is what we're going to do in terms of providing refunds to folks in the future. Parent expectations, you know, certainly, again, having been a parent with three children. Gone through the district and this understanding that the school year was closed for a third of the year. That there is certainly expectation that parents would receive some money back, if you will, for services not rendered. And so I certainly want to acknowledge that sentiment and that kind of common sense approach as well. And that's part of the equation for sure. So what would this look like if we were to provide some sort of refund or credit transactions by program? And these numbers, this chart shows the number of families or the number of students. That are have paid us a fee that might potentially be eligible for a refund or credit. And again, you can see I won't read through them all, but you can see that the total. Number is just, just under thirty-seven hundred. In terms of the. Status, you know, we know that with the full-day kindergarten, preschool and extended school care, folks paid through March. In terms of our billing system and cycle and receive services for about half of that month. In terms of the ASAP program, the after-school activities program that was offered through. The extended school care program this springtime, customers paid a hundred percent of those fees. I've got just over two hundred of those folks and the middle school program did not offer any classes. And the elementary program was able to offer one or two of those classes. So if we, again, if we look at refunds there. We kind of have this bifurcation of some folks had one or two classes or a portion and they might be, you know. Reimbursed a portion of that, their fee and others did not receive any, so that. You might consider reimbursing a hundred percent of their fee. And then, of course, bus customers paid the three hundred and ten dollar fee at the beginning of the school year in order to be eligible to. To ride. And again, schools were closed for about a third of the year. So that's the numbers in terms of families. In terms of dollars. These are the estimated amounts that, again, if one were to make an assumption, and there's, you know, a couple of different ways to. Look at this certainly. So I had to make an assumption in order to come up with these numbers. This isn't meant to be a decision point. By any means, but rather just kind of give an order of magnitude so that if one were to assume that, you know, that. A parent would not pay for any day that school was closed due to COVID in the preschool program. Then we'd be looking at upwards of about thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars in total. Again, across two hundred and twenty-eight families. And depending on what program they're in, whether it's a two-day-a-week program or four-day-a-week program, and if they're full pay. Or if they got a prorated amount due to financial need, those reimbursements could look anywhere between fifty dollars and two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Kindergarten totality, just over twenty-seven thousand dollars refunds, looking at anywhere between thirty-five dollars and a hundred and forty-nine dollars per student. The ASAP program, again. Ranging between thirty and forty dollars or ten thousand dollars in total. Busing, you know, depending on how one were to look at this, again, the parent perspective might be. Hey, I didn't get service for a third of the year. So why don't you reimburse me a third of my cost, which would be about a hundred and eight dollars. And then another perspective would be. And I'll call it a district perspective is, well, we're continuing to pay the bus company for the entire year. Albeit at a lesser rate, seventy-five percent of the normal cost for a third of the year. So the refund due is really twenty-seven dollars. And then you can see the difference there in terms of what might be decided around. The total impact in terms of reimbursing could be anywhere between sixty-nine thousand to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Going back out to the parent community and out of the school department coffers. Food service is, I'd say relatively simpler. I think we can probably. You know, pursue what we have done in the past, which is refunding seniors, graduating seniors. Who have a balance greater than ten dollars in cutting a check back to them. Certainly the food service department, if a senior had a balance and had a sibling in a lower grade, they could transfer that balance to the, to that sibling in a lower grade. And then anybody whose grade does not have a sibling has a positive balance for a number of years now. We just carry that balance forward. That's kind of been standard practice. So, you know, some options, just basic options to look at. In this environment would be. You know, making all refunds to all parents. Refunding only those where no services could be provided. Like busing or extended school care, but not the full-day kindergarten or preschool because we're continuing to provide remote learning in those programs. You could set up a process. Again, this would probably be more labor-intensive, but you could set up a process where parents. Would have to request a refund by a certain deadline and if they didn't meet the deadline. And were past it, then they'd be declined to refund. And, you know, finally, what needs to be decided is the formula for these refunds. And again, there's a couple of different ways to do that. And I think I elaborated that on an earlier slide, so I'll repeat that. And I think I elaborated that on an earlier slide, so I'll repeat that. And then, of course, you know, importantly is, you know, how will our customers react to the response to the decision about refunds or credits? And will it dissuade them from purchasing these services for their family in the future? Or their sentiment towards the school department in general in the future? And also, you know, really important, I think, is, you know, how might this affect the future? And it's, from all accounts, from other folks, it's likely that we might have some sort of second wave or recurrence of closure next school year. And if that were to be for, say, just a week of school closure or three days, you know, tacked on to a school vacation or maybe two weeks, does the decision now create an expectation for parents that we're going to somehow, you know, slice this so thinly that for every closure day next year that we're going to be providing daily discounts to folks? So that's a little bit of a Pandora's box, I think, but it's certainly a consideration along the way. So, of course, there's no decisions for tonight nor a recommendation. We certainly wanted to provide information to the school committee and to the community at large and make sure that everybody was aware of the variety of aspects that go into this and receive, if it's possible, some initial guidance or thoughts from the school committee tonight so that we could make a recommendation to you, excuse me, at your next meeting, next Wednesday. And that a decision could be made, you know, either next week or the following week. You know, I don't think that there's a huge rush to make a decision. I think it's an important one in that the right amount of time and information ought to be applied before one is made. So I think that's all I have. I'll stop sharing my screen now. And happy to entertain any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Patrick, for the presentation. There's a lot of information to digest here, and there are a lot of scenarios. And as you mentioned, and as we've said pretty much every week for the last five weeks, there, we don't have a playbook for this, right? You know, I'm all for, you know, looking at our existing policies on refunds, but at the same time, there's no policy that, you know, gives us any indication, like what if services suspended as a result of a pandemic that doesn't exist today? So with that, I just think, you know, we just need to take a, obviously, a careful approach to the options that you sent here. You know, I think looking at the services that weren't rendered and providing some form of credit would be where I would start first. You know, I agree with you too, that, you know, certainly the food services thing seems to be something that we've handled previously and that there is more process for. But when it comes to busing, understanding that two-thirds of the year was covered with the service and then, you know, that the twenty-five percent of that, the fee covers twenty-five percent of what the total cost of busing is to the district. That also needs to be factored in to those decisions. It's just, it's a lot. I know I'm kind of talking out loud here, but I'd be curious to hear where my colleagues are at in terms of, you know, some type of an approach to administering credit. I'm also sensitive to the heavy administrative costs that are associated with executing on whatever this plan is that we can formulate, so.
Thanks, John. Dale?
I, you know, there's a, this was a very good presentation. It allows us to see all the complexity that's involved with the decision-making and the logistics. But I think that some of this is fairly simple. We agonize every year about whether or not we should charge a fee for a service to our parents. And the parents decide that they agree to pay a fee for a service. And if we do not give them that service, then I do not feel that we are justified in keeping the money that they have paid us for that service. Our expenses are kind of secondary. That it's like any other business where you have certain expenses and you hope that when you charge fees for your services, you end up doing well. But I do not feel that our expense ratio or the logistics of giving the money back would allow us to justify holding on to the money. So I would support refunding the money for the unused services that the parents have paid for. And that would include, in my mind, the whole shebang for the buses, not just twenty-five percent. So that's, that's kind of where my mind is. I think it's very unfortunate that, you know, from what I'm hearing, they, between the, you know, the staffing, the software, and a very Byzantine set of rules that the government has put in place, that carrying out what, to me, seems to be fair and a, what is ordinarily a fairly straightforward business transaction has, is such a burden to the, to the district. And that is unfortunate and sort of makes things harder. But I don't think it detracts from just facing this from a point of view of fairness to parents.
Mr. Collins?
Sure. And I appreciate those comments. And I do want to make sure that the school committee and the community knows that we're certainly not, and I'm certainly not trying to imply that the administrative burden would be a reason not to do it, but rather that it would take a fair amount of time in that, excuse me, that we do have some restrictions that other private businesses don't have. So certainly, if the school committee decides to go in that direction, we will get it done. But I just wanted to kind of unpack that a little bit because I think people that work in the private sector don't really understand some of the restrictions in which we work, excuse me. And some things just take a little bit longer. That's all, because that's our environment, not making excuse for it. There's some really good reasons for it, that those things are in place. So we'll get it if that's what the committee decides.
If I could just follow up with one sentence here, and that is, when we, when you expose all of these problems you're going through, I think that, you know, we need to get ourselves past this particular problem. But we also should use this as an opportunity to see what we can fix to make ourselves function more like other businesses, if we can, and part of this.
John, do you have anything?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to Dr. McGee's comments and mine as well. I think what struck me in the presentation was that inability to credit somebody's credit card, right? I mean, I'm on the private side of things, and that is just a standard procedure that we use. And that kind of in my head, like, okay, we need to level set, you know, whatever, whatever expectations that we set, whatever options that we allow for, we need to level set expectations on the turn time for, for these requests because it's going to take, you know, much longer to fulfill whatever they are because of that hang-up there. So, and that's, seems to be a restriction, that it's a guideline that's been provided to us that we have to follow, so.
Absolutely. Jason?
Two thoughts that I wanted to offer. First and foremost, my thoughts these days are often with families who are struggling financially as a result of this pandemic. We have a lot of families here in Shrewsbury who may have thought that they were fine or stable financially just months or weeks ago, who are now living on the edge of the night. And in light of that, I feel very strongly that in spite of the administrative burden, we do need to make some measure of an effort to refund families, in particular, those families who might express that they need or desire a refund right now to keep funds for a service that won't be rendered when we have families who are hurting, to me, seems as difficult as it is. And I do appreciate everything that Mr. Collins outlined, but to keep monies rendered for a service when we can't render that service and families are struggling is, to a certain extent, unconscionable to me. And I recognize how difficult it's going to be, but it is something I feel we need to do. But what I want to add to that, too, is I think it's important for, you know, just to highlight for the committee and to highlight for the community. This committee has pointed out time and time again, over a period of years, how unhappy we all are to be as reliant on fees as we are. Dr. McGee alluded to this. This is a community with a probably very low residential property tax rate. And as a consequence of that, the high level of service that comes from this district, a lot of the services we are able to provide, a lot of the activities we're able to provide are fee-dependent. This is just another sad consequence of being as fee-dependent as we are. There are, there are a lot of consequences to that fee dependency that we see in normal times. Then that could be everything from, you know, services only being accessible to certain families to needing to create special programs for families that might have barriers to access to not necessarily fully knowing how many students or families stay away from certain opportunities because of the fees. We are a district that's extremely reliant on fees, especially as compared to other districts. And this is just another example for the community of where that can complicate things and cause unnecessary headaches. And I am forced to agree with the comment that Dr. McGee offered earlier, that unfortunately, unlike a tax rendered for us to provide education, fees are payments for a service that's to be rendered. And here we are in a position where we can't fully render services.
Thank you. Lindsay?
So I think I have both a question and then a sort of a comment, a philosophical one, but the, because this is certainly very complicated, as everyone has already laid out. For the full-day kindergarten, and this might be directed towards Ms. Clutter or Dr. Sawyer, are those children receiving any sort of different kindergarten experience than our half-day kindergarten youngsters at this point in time? Or is the service, I appreciate that we're still paying the teachers, right? So that goes back to Dr. McGee's expense side and service side. Is there a differentiation at all in what they are receiving?
No.
Okay.
It's not as if, you know, because essentially, under the model, which we can't wait to have, make history when the New Deal School opens, of not having full-day kindergarten. But essentially, the tuition for full-day kindergarten provides the additional half-day that's not part of the standard. Under remote learning, we're not providing the conditional sessions or additional assignments or anything of the like. So that, that's not the case. Tangentially, students who pay for preschool services through tuition aren't getting extra preschool, that they're paying for the preschool experience in the first place. That's some of the difference between preschool tuition and full-day kindergarten tuition under remote learning. Because certainly, all of our preschool students similarly are getting the same amount of remote learning programming as anyone else. So there is some nuance there.
Okay. I think that what I, what I sort of think about this issue is, how we started off this meeting tonight was looking at the generosity in our community, right? And we are accepting a pretty significant donation. And we have a community that has, we know we have people in our community with a lot of needs. And we know we also have people in our community who want to give and be supportive of our district. And when they know that we are facing a, looking at another, you know, multiple millions of dollars, we need to somehow find and dig out of our piggy bank that doesn't exist, that's already empty, I'm wondering if there's a way to, to very, you know, broadly put out to the community that there, you could opt into a refund if you want to and have that, that that's a choice that some people are going to make and say that thirty dollars that I put towards the after-school program for my kid to do tests or whatever it might be, all these extra opportunities, is really important to me, and I need it back, to Mr. Collins's point. But for some families, they absolutely need that money. And we know one in four adults right now in Massachusetts are unemployed. But for those who don't and who are listening to us also, and I think over the next couple of weeks, as we continue to talk about the cuts that we're going to need to continue to make, this is a bottom line, and we can compare ourselves to a business, but we're not a business. We are something fundamentally different. And so for those who are in a position, as they may have otherwise contributed to the Colonial Fund and other things to support our district as we try to navigate through this, if we want to think about an option, you know, maybe that goes out through the superintendent's email. Maybe it's the phone. We work hard to put it out there to everybody so they know it's something that they can do and make it relatively seamless, sort of opt in to a refund. But there might be a lot of families who see this issue very, very differently based on their own financial circumstances.
Thank you, Lindsay. I think I agree with everything everyone's saying. You know, this is a financial situation, but it's also an issue of fairness and the fee for service that we've always talked about. And there are families who may not be able to afford this additional dollars out of their pockets. And if we can offer a refund, I think that is what we should do if we're not providing that service. I would hope that it's a program where someone can opt in. I think we have to have a date that it has to be done by because, as Mr. Collins said, municipal finance is very different. It's not going to be something that's going to happen quickly. It's going to take a lot of, it's labor-intensive. And unfortunately, that might become the new normal for this process that we have to work through. I want to hear from the public. I think this is something we want to have some input from before we vote on that. And again, just for the public who's watching, the email for the school committee is schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Please reach out and let us know what your thoughts are. Ms. Heffernan, I agree with the part, if someone wants to make that as a donation, that's another one if they can afford to. But if there are families who need that refund, we should absolutely be giving that back to them. So I think we have a lot to think about. And I'd like to, again, hear the public's feedback on this. And then if we vote next week, that would be great. But Mr. Collins, you said it is not that time-sensitive, that it could go beyond next week?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Dr. Sawyer, do you have anything further?
No, thank you. That the feedback from the committee is very helpful. I'll craft a recommendation for your meeting for next week. Be interested certainly to hear the public's feedback when I send out my weekly update, which is due tomorrow, do they go out tomorrow or Friday? We'll be sure to include the link of this meeting, the link to the materials from this presentation and the school committee's email address, as well as my own in case people would like to give feedback relative to their thoughts on this. So I appreciate that and appreciate Mr. Collins' work to frame the issues. It is, again, very complicated. And as much as we certainly look to adopt good organizational management practices as they might exist in any organization, we are limited by public finance laws that exist, of course, to make sure the public's money is protected in their processes. But some of those processes, unfortunately, are unwieldy. And that's the situation we will face, depending on, obviously, how we have to execute to whatever the school committee's decision is. But appreciate the feedback, and we will make a recommendation for next week.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are minutes from the school committee meeting held on April 29th, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? I don't see any. They can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of negotiations with some or all of the following: the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, and to our non-represented staff, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, it will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session?
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.